Item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the next thing on our agenda, I didn't notice this earlier, but is the election of officers. How do we handle this, Amy?
You would need someone to make a motion for the Chair and for the Vice Chair and for the Secretary.
Can that motion be made in one, so you can nominate all three?
I think it's cleaner if we do three separate.
Okay.
All right, for Secretary, I'd like to nominate Mary Ann McCreary.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing none?
I'll nominate, can I pronounce your last name, Chris? Greg?
Grayjack.
Grayjack, I nominate Chris Grayjack for Chair.
Support? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it passes. And lastly, the...
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Eric Rousch for Vice Chair.
Support?
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. We have new officers, or the same officers, I should say. All right, next is the approval of the agenda itself. I could get a motion.
Still move.
Support?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Next up is the Declaration of a Conflict of Interest. This is for our commission members up here. If the hearings for that evening conflict with the interests of your business or family, step forward at this time to disqualify yourself from this, or whatever hearing it is. Hearing none, I'm going to go forward to the first call to the public. This call to the public is not for tonight's agenda, but for anything else that people would like to speak on related to township business. Is there anyone who would like to come forward at this time?
Want to explain that rule about signing out?
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. We started a new situation because we have, as a lot of folks come up and talk, which is great. There is a sheet for assignment, do you have that, Pat?
I do.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's for general comments or for the items, but the person is Mary Jane Bieber and Justin Haynes.
Mine's not familiar. Good evening.
Evening.
Nice to see everybody again. My comment is simply this. The Board of Trustees has heard my comment too about social media and just, it can be a little bit of a slippery slope as the township has embraced it. And I think tonight's agenda item is a perfect example of that. We produced, you produced an item to go on one of the social media things, and what happened was someone else then put on kind of a negative look at this particular project, which then forces the township to also have a response. So, I just again think social media can be a little bit of a slippery slope, and I think it's incumbent upon the township to simply do with the facts and not have to respond to all those things. And good luck tonight. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, any others that would like to come up at this time? Seeing none, that means you're going to wait till the next call to the public for this particular case. I'll bring it back up front and we'll close that call to the public. And we'll start with public hearing number one, which is consideration for rezoning application, PUD agreement, environmental impact assessment, PUD conceptual and preliminary site condo plan to rezone 127.57 acres from agricultural AG to low-density residential LDR to allow for a proposed 55-unit single-family site condominium development located on the east, northwest corner of Chalice Road and Bauer Road. The proposed zoning is for the following parcels: 4711, 23, 4008, 4007, 4001, and 300013. The request is submitted by Polty Homes of Michigan. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Is this on?
Here.
Okay. Good evening. It's nice to be back with you again. We've come a long way. We've been working on this project behind the scenes for a year or better. This is our third public meeting, and we're pleased at the progress that we've made. Along with the three public meetings, we also had meetings, a meeting with the Mountain View Homeowners Association at one of their regular meetings. They were so kind to invite us to share our plans with them. And we've also had several different individuals call about the thing, the project. One of the things I wanted to be grateful for today is that, you know, I've been doing this for a long time, doing entitlement work for about 30 years. And I don't think I've ever had a letter that was sent in that was in support of the project. You know, generally, people that are willing to take the time to put a letter together are not in support of the project. And there was one in the packet today, so I'm grateful for that. Small blessing. So our list, we spent probably between four or five hours between the two prior public meetings going through some detailed presentations, so I won't retil that same ground. What I'm going to do is just focus on the items that you gave us direction to focus on for this particular meeting. The list is considerably shorter than the others, but we can revisit any of those topics if you like. So here on the screen, you see the overall property outlined in red, and you see now that we are proposing 55 units instead of 58 units, and you'll see why momentarily. It is a rezoning from AG to low-density residential with a residential PUD cluster overlay, which is in conformance with your ordinance. That's not a variance or a deviation from your master plan or your ordinance, as written into the code. So first, we began with a low-density residential parallel plan that showed 58 estates on the 127 acres. You can see in the upper right-hand corner, an excerpt, a screenshot, from your master plan, and that's reflected on the left side where you see the red dotted line, north and south. One of the prior revisions was to reduce lot sizes to two acre, or I should say, increase lot sizes, reduce unit count to the two-acre size to the west of the line, and the others are one acre. So we were using this to establish the baseline density, the unit count, if you will. One of the things that we were asked to do, which we did in prior meetings, was to demonstrate the constructibility of all the units that we show on the master plan. And I believe we've done that to your satisfaction. The plan we looked at last time is here, this is 58 estate units on the 127 acres. So the concept behind not doing this plan, the, if you will, by right, it's still the rezoning to conform with your master plan, but the underlying zoning of LDR, instead of doing this plan, we propose to do this plan, which would preserve approximately 70 acres of open space, both upland and lowland, wetland areas. That's about a 57% open space calculation. And we went through several iterations on various things, buffers and locks and things of that nature. The overall concept was, let's keep it low density. Let's not exceed the underlying unit count. Let's do something that's compliant with your master plan, the vision that was set out for your community, by your community. Let's do a neighborhood that has beautiful estate homes that we can all be proud of, and let's preserve as many natural features as we can. So that's why we moved from the parallel plan to the plan that we looked at last time. This is our current plan, so we're down to 55 units. One of the things that we had direction on last time, let me go back to kind of clarify this a little bit. As you see, there's a triangle that I have highlighted in orange on this plan. That was the area we were focused on, that we'll call the northern cul-de-sac. And you can see I also highlighted the plan, the master plan, with the same orange triangle. And you can kind of see that there are large lot rural residential in yellow on both sides of that triangle. And Vice Chairman Rousch pointed out that, you know, he didn't want to have a, setting a precedent for moving north or northward with higher density. And so suggested that we take another look at the development in that particular area. So we did that, and in this triangle, you can see that we have reduced it by three units. So we went from seven units in the triangle, if you will, down to four units in the triangle. Couple of nice things happened when we did that. So first of all, you can see the farthest northern lot doesn't creep its toe across the line. So if I go back, you can see our farthest northern lot kind of creeped across the line here now. And that line that we're referring to is the master plan line designating the difference between the rural residential two-acre lots and the low-density residential with the one-acre lots. So that was one good thing. The second thing I would point out is that because we weren't putting so many units in that area, we didn't have sort of that odd configuration where we had one sort of sandwiched between the road and the railroad tracks. And if I go back again, you can see there was the lot on the east side of that, and the driveways kind of went along its western property line. And then when you look at it now today, the driveway, if you will, parallels the railroad tracks. And so all of those lots will have nice rear views into the 70 acres of open space. So it actually improves those lots. Another benefit of the revised plan in the triangle is, if you look at the cul-de-sac length here, and I go back, you can see it's much longer on the old plan versus the new plan. They're purposely exactly the same size and boundary, so you can jump back and forth and see long cul-de-sac, short cul-de-sac. So what does that do for us? So that reduces the impervious area on the site, so it's got less of an environmental impact when you have a longer cul-de-sac. We did take a look at making that all one driveway rather than a full-service road, because that was asked for us to investigate that too. There's some challenge involved with that, and so we kind of split the, split the needle here, threaded the needle here by having the full-service road with the cul-de-sac for fire truck turnaround and, you know, that hopefully we won't have events that require fire trucks to turn around. But certainly, moving trucks and construction access equipment and Amazon drivers every single day with their big trucks, be able to come around a full-size, full-service driveway was one of the reasons. But also, if you look at the railroad track and you look at the adjacent wetland, there's a fairly significant elevation difference between the two. So when we put a road, whether it's a 20-foot or a 16-foot wide driveway or a 27-foot wide road, the impact is really constrained more by the elevational difference between those two points, between the lowland that we have to match the existing because we're not impacting that wetland. We are impacting it in a minor way in the upper corner. But the bulk of that wetland is called to remain, and so its elevation will remain as is, and we're not impacting the railroad tracks, so that will remain as is. So we're connecting the dots between the two, and we're creating a flat plain between those. And so during the final engineering process, we'll have to work out the details about that, whether there'll be a short retaining wall on either side of that road to make that elevational difference. There are some other things that we could do. For example, there's a traffic calming device that you often see at pedestrian crossings where the road necks down to a little bit skinnier area. And we can take a look at that in the final engineering to see if there's any further wetland impact that we could reduce as a result of this. But we wanted to get these four future residents full-service access up to that point, and then have the shared drive beyond that. So these changes, in my opinion, turned out to be good changes for the plan overall, and it also accomplished the task which we were charged with, which was to reduce that sort of northern triangle density to the extent possible. Whoops, no, that's right. So the second charge that we were tasked with was to double the basin landscaping. So we've done that. So here's the revised landscaping plan, and you can see that the required tree count around that is 32, and we have 65. So we have doubled up the landscaping, the trees. There's already 320 bushes around there, so that's a tougher one to double up. I think the intent was to not forget about those residents that act to the detention basin so that they can also have screening from the development, because obviously you can look over a detention basin and see development out there. So those adjacent residents will now have the same type of buffer as will be enjoyed by the other residents further to the south. Another item that we were asked, we discussed the traffic impact assessment at length at the last meeting. The first meeting, we were asked to do one. The second meeting, we talked about it at length. It was a traffic impact assessment, it was 38 pages long, it was prepared by Fleece and Vanderbrink. And the conclusions, this is excerpt from the last slideshow, was that there won't be any significant impact to the overall traffic that would require additional road modifications. And a couple of questions came up, and I did my best to answer those questions, but we were asked to send it back to the traffic consultant and make sure that we had the right answers for those questions. And the questions were, "Does the traffic impact study include the trips that are generated by the proposed multifamily development at Door Road and Grand River?" The answer, and you have it in Julie Kroll's letter in your package, is yes. So the trips generated by the Door Road and Grand River development were considered through the background growth. So background growth, for anybody not familiar with traffic studies, is they go out and they take the counts, which we talked about at length last time, about how they take them, and what they adjust them to, what they compare them to, when do they take them, all of those things. But they take the counts so that they know what the traffic volume is in the morning rush hour, in the evening rush hour, and what the total is over the course of the day. So that's our baseline. And then background traffic is increased to presume a level of additional development, because obviously we're counting traffic today, but if this planning commission had not asked us to look at any other particular development, it still required that we include growth. And so in this particular case, it was a one and a half percent growth, which those numbers were already baked into the traffic impact assessment. So the question was easy for Julie to answer, to say, yeah, she got a copy of the traffic study from that particular development, looked at the trips that were generated there, and those were all included in our background growth. So we already assumed a certain level of additional development besides ours when doing the assessment. The second question, and I think this one was more one from some of the residents that spoke at a couple of the meetings, was that the Legacy Hills traffic assessment referred to a Legacy Hills site plan that included 129 single-family units, and there was some conjecture about whether we were going to be extending this on the other side of the railroad tracks to some other properties, projects that are not part of this application. And the answer is no. And the reason that it's referenced in there is because the Livingston County Road Commission used a concept plan for this property that was prepared by the owners of the property. So not by Polty Homes, has nothing to do with what we're proposing. So they had previously said, "What are we going to do on this property? Let's put 129 units there." Instead of doing that, they went into contract with Polty Homes, who was proposing 55 units here. So the road commission had that concept plan, which they utilized when they designed the roundabout. So they have to do the same thing that we do, which is, what are the traffic counts today? What developments are planned around the area that we know about? And what percentage of growth should we anticipate in the future? So they did that, and they anticipated that when they designed the roundabout. So in other words, the roundabout is overdesigned for this development's contribution by more than double, right? So it anticipated we would have 129 units on this site. We're only going to have 55 units on this site if we're able to move on through the process. And so that's the difference between the 129. It had nothing to do with future development, future phases, other pieces of property, or any kind of smoke and mirrors. The last item that I wanted to mention is an update or a change or a follow-up to our prior conversations was, it seemed that unanimously, I can't remember a single commenter that said, "I would prefer to have a nature trail in the common open space rather than a public off-site connection that would get us down to Bauer and Chalice Roundabout." And so that is, was listed. I believe there's still a note on the cover page that says there's an option there. But I think that all of the speakers said that would be a much better public benefit than the nature path, and so that's the way that we're going to pursue that. You can see, there's a picture in the upper right-hand corner. And what you see off in the distance is the future entrance location for this development. So it's looking west on Chalice Road. Yes, thank you. West on Chalice Road, and you can see a public walk would go nicely on the north side, the top of the bank, behind the tree line, there wouldn't be any clearing to handle that could go right from our entrance, which will also be extended, as I mentioned in the last meeting, to the Mountain View entrance. So that path would be readily accessible to those neighbors as well. Down to the Bauer Road and Chalice intersection, there was some talk about whether we cross on the north side and down across and back, or whether we get there. It's neither here nor there. We'll get across the intersection. There's already a couple of pedestrian crossings there. We'll work with the Livingston County Road Commission, and we'll do what they want us to do, right, at that location. But we'll get the path there, and we'll do a pedestrian crossing at that point. So it makes more of an overall pedestrian connectivity within your community. The last slide is just, you know, to thank you for taking your time. Again, you've spent a lot of hours on this, as has the development team, to get a plan that we can really all be proud of. I think there are going to be some fantastic houses. And we're here tonight to answer any additional questions that you might have. Hopefully, we've satisfied the concerns that you had at the last meeting. I also have with me my fellow associates. I've got Joe Score, Kirk Thomas, Paul Schick, Polty Homes are here, and Brian Biskner of my office is also here. So thank you for your attention.
All right, thank you. Brian?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Are we on? Just making sure. Okay, thanks, sorry. It's hard to tell when you're on the mic, so. So just for starters, a reminder that procedurally, the four elements of this particular request, that includes the proposed rezoning, the draft planned unit development agreement, the environmental impact assessment, and the conceptual PUD site plan are all in front of commission for recommendation. So ultimately, pending your recommendation on each of those items, they will all go forward to the Township Board for a final determination. And then just another reminder, I guess, for the public, the residents in attendance, as well as those at home now, since we're on TV, that this is really just kind of the first step in the process. If the commission and ultimately the board do grant the PUD agreement, the rezoning, the conceptual plan review, petitioner still has to come back before commission and board for a final PUD site plan. So this is really just the starting point for this project. There would be future reviews, future hearings, future public meetings, should the board grant approval of the four items that are before you this evening. So with that out of the way, I will jump into a summary of my review letter. You should have in your agenda packets, review letter dated January the 7th. I will start with the PUD qualification conditions. So these are found in detail in section 10.02 of the Township Zoning Ordinance. Similar to my previous review letter, I did find that, for the most part, these standards are met. There are two items that I want to present for your consideration within this section. The first is that in order to grant residential units of less than one acre without sewer and water, you do have to make findings that it meets the cluster development standards of the zoning ordinance. So that's under your qualifying conditions. And then there's more detail forthcoming under the conceptual plan review as it relates to the cluster development option in particular. So that would be the first item. That needs to be addressed to your satisfaction, ultimately the boards, in order to make a finding that clearly the project does meet the qualifying conditions. And then the second is merely that any technical items that have been identified at this stage in the project by Shelby and her firm, Utilities Director and/or Fire Authority, are also addressed as part of this review process. Those are the only comments I have in that particular component, Mr. Chair. So I will jump into my review of the proposed rezoning. So as petitioner noted, and I think you all will recall from previous meetings on this particular project, the request entails sort of two rezonings. There's the underlying component, which is the LDR request, so low-density residential. And that's because use of the residential PUD is an overlay district. So the petitioner is seeking to amend the base zoning, consistent with your plan, and then apply over top of that a planned unit development which would identify further restrictions, regulations, and grant the township the ability to sort of negotiate the project with the developer. So with that being said, did find that, as presented, the request to go to LDR with the RPUD overlay is consistent with the master plan, both the future land use plan as well as the goals and objectives that are related to additional natural feature preservation, to which use of the cluster development option does provide for greater open space protection and preservation than would otherwise be required. So in this instance, there are just over 58% of the total site areas being protected as open space. If it were just a standard cluster development, that requirement would be a minimum of 50%. If it were just an RPUD and not a cluster development, that requirement would only be 25%. So as you can see, sort of the base layers of what the ordinance would require, they're above and beyond even your most restrictive standard, and that's for use of the cluster option. This is entirely a detached, single-family project as proposed. There are no other uses that are identified on plan or in the draft agreement. Generally speaking, given the nature of the area, adjacent residential development to the west at sort of a similar density, albeit a little bit larger lots, but when you take into account the total site area and the area being preserved, we did find that the host of uses that were being proposed is reasonable and consistent with the surrounding area. And then my standard closing is that any technical comments provided by engineering, utilities, and/or Fire Authority would need to be addressed. And that's because there are also infrastructure standards related to the rezoning review of this particular item. Moving on then into the last segment of my review letter, and this is related to the conceptual PUD site plan review. These are standards found in section 10.03.01 of the Township Zoning Ordinance. So petitioner kind of hit on my first comment, and that is related to making sure that we're all on the same page with respect to that public pathway. As was discussed at the last meeting, there were two different options presented. I don't want to go back through it, he's already presented it in greater detail than I need to. But the revised submittal did still identify, as noted, that there were options. And I wanted to just make sure, I felt as though the commission was pretty clear that the public pathway option in the right of way was the preference. So provided that's the case, I'd like to see the verbiage identified on the conceptual plan cover sheet as well as within the supplemental materials. I'd like to see that updated. And then ultimately, as we get into the next step of this project, if the board grants approval, we will obviously need to get into the details of the construction of that. approval, we will obviously need to get into the details of the construction of that particular pathway as part of this. In terms of the dimensions that are being proposed, so petitioner showed you the revised parallel plan, so the number of units is within what would be allowed on the parallel plan. And that did take into account, as we got into a little bit last month, it was refined even more this month, that did take into account the fact that the northwesterly portion has a different future land use designation than does the easterly portion of the property. So all of those items were corrected. They are proposing the fifty-five units that they would be allowed on that, on the parallel plan. In terms of unit sizes, setbacks, they are still seeking the same deviations that were requested in previous versions of this plan. And those are related to the reduction in lot area and lot width, which are allowable by use of the cluster option, as well as two setback deviations. So they're looking for a slight reduction in the one side yard minimum, as well as the combination of both side yard setbacks minimum. So those remain unchanged from what you saw last time and even the previous time. I will, I'll hit the next stage, Mr. Chair, as I sort of alluded to this, under the qualifying conditions. These are the actual cluster option standards. So of note, these are still within section ten oh three oh one. This is specific to paragraph D of that section of your ordinance. There are a whole list of items. I'm merely identifying sort of a summary of those at this point. So the first one has actually been addressed. So in the time from issuance of my review letter to preparation of the packets for your consideration to tonight's meeting, the petitioner was able to go in and make a few corrections to the set of plans that I reviewed. I'm not sure which set got in front of you, but the set that I reviewed did have one-dimensional deficiency, and that was the lot area of proposed unit thirty. That was corrected, at least in terms of what I saw, but after my review letter was issued. So if you have those same plans, that has been corrected. If you do not, and if you have the plans that I originally reviewed, then we would want to make sure that the corrected set is included, that's included as a condition ultimately, if this is going to move forward. There were also, it didn't hit my review letter, but it sort of was part of my review of the revised plan on, just off the cuff, there were a couple of other little typos in the table. If you look at this drawing in particular, the table in the bottom left identifies the unit number, the proposed lot area, and the reduction from the one-acre conventional minimum. There were a couple of other little typos that I caught in there. So ultimately, it may have been corrected, and what you have and what's current may be fully up to date and accurate. If not, I want to make sure that we ultimately have that as a corrected drawing in the submittal package if this moves forward to the board. So again, I'll probably work with Amy to figure that one out a little bit. But just bringing that one up for your awareness at this stage.
Brian, can I ask a question while you're on that topic? So were those adjustments made as a result of minimizing the four lots and then changing the lot thirty-one? Were those the adjustments?
I don't know where the additional land area came from. I just know that it was increased to meet the minimum. So under your cluster option standard, you cannot go below three-quarters of an acre.
Right.
Correct. And as originally present, not originally, but as this version of the plan was presented to me in its first iteration, that unit in particular was a little deficient. And again, in the course of issuance of the letter to tonight, they did correct that item.
Right.
Where they borrowed the extra land from, I honestly couldn't tell you. I didn't do a point-by-point review of all the lots around it. But I did notice there were a couple discrepancies of the lot areas noted on the plan versus those identified on the table.
Thank you.
But all of them did exceed that three-quarters of an acre number.
Thank you.
That's the most important part.
Important part.
But accuracy is also an important part of this process. So we want to make sure we get that corrected, if it hasn't been already. Similar to previous versions, the roadway connection does encroach into both a wetland as well as your local natural feature setback requirement. That is unchanged. The, as noted by petitioner in his presentation, the extent of that encroachment has been minimized to a degree. That will still, however, require both state approval through Eagle as well as local approval through the township. And that is identified within the PUD agreement as another sort of a deviation or authorization that is being sought, and that's to encroach into that required natural feature setback. So that remains part of the overall request. In terms of, this is just related to, again, if this moves forward and we ultimately get to that stage, your ordinance does require a preservation and maintenance plan for the open space area. That is required as part of final PUD submittal. So it's nothing we have to deal with at this particular time. That's as much for the applicant's awareness as anything. There's a very long-winded, even more than I am, provision in the ordinance that relates to your ability to include reasonable conditions as part of the project and use of the cluster option. I won't go into detail on those, they're all in my letter. But basically, just keep in mind that if there's anything related to protection of public health, welfare, safety, infrastructure, additional natural feature preservation, ensuring consistency with the master plan and the township ordinance, you have the ability to include conditions that would bring it to that level if you feel there are some deficiencies. I'll say it again, unfortunately, I'm sorry, it's the third time I've said it, but each of these categories has its own set of standards. And of course, there's also standing here related to infrastructure and public safety. So anything that Shelby has presented at this stage, as well as those of the utilities director and/or fire authority, will have to be addressed. And this is specific to the conceptual PUD site plan. I know that staff and township attorney have reviewed the PUD agreement. So any comments they've put forth, we want to make sure those are addressed. I had put forth several myself, the majority of which had been addressed as a result of the most recent version of that document that I saw. But I do want to make sure that we keep that in. So if you were to put forth a favorable recommendation on the draft PUD agreement this evening, I would encourage you to include that as a condition, that they have to address any comments from township staff and/or township attorney. I did have two closing points, sort of related, but slightly separate. I brought these up last time, and I apologize if the revised version didn't hit it, and/or I haven't seen the most current version of the draft agreement. But there are some, and remain, some double-fronted lots. And we did talk about these a little bit last time. But so if you look at the lots that are just on the north side of Chalice and those that are on the west side of Bauer, sorry, I got comfortable and got away from the mic. Those inherently will have their primary frontage by the new internal private roads. But they will also have sort of their functional rear yard, still actually technically be front yards along those public rights-of-way. So I just want to make sure that for the applicant's purposes and for future residents who may acquire and/or live on those particular lots, I want to make sure that the PUD itself addresses and identifies those front yards as sort of functional rear yards. And I did, I got into more detail last time. But the idea being that we want to make sure that they can have accessory features, accessory components, without the need for further variation or deviation from what would otherwise be restricted or regulated by your ordinance. So I, we've done that in the past. I think we can do that again here. I would just like to make sure that we're on the same page with that one, and that ultimately it is addressed as part of this PUD review and process. And then my closing point, again, is another one I brought up before, but I do want to make sure it gets in there. So given the extent of the areas to be preserved by this proposal, that includes the wetland areas, that includes the natural feature setback areas, that includes the buffer areas along the adjacent neighborhood, as well as along the two public roadways, we'd like to see the incorporation of some form of signage and/or demarcation so that ultimately the residents, the people that live here, the people that may want to develop here, are aware of those restrictions and make sure they understand that some, whatever the regulation might be, we want to make sure they understand that they can't just encroach into those areas. So if it's a natural feature setback, you can't just mow your lawn, even if it looks like grass, you can't just mow into that area. It's supposed to be preserved and protected. So the language for the preservation and protection is already in place, but I want to make sure that ultimately there's some physical demarcation on property so that there isn't any confusion and/or sort of this gradual encroachment that could take place over time if it's sort of left unchecked. That's all I have at this time, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Brian. Shelby?
So most of my comments, we've seen before in my previous letters, they outline requirements that will be items needed as part of the final site plan review process. So nothing that needs to be addressed in this conceptual plan, but things like private roads, storm drainage, storm clogs, grading, that need to be included in the more detailed plans. A couple highlights that are regarding the changes in the layout would be that the private road long dead end that exceeds your thousand-feet requirement is now reduced. It's still slightly longer than the thousand feet at like eleven-hundred feet. But given how this site is situated, it would be nearly impossible to loop back and create a loop for that dead end. So we would, you know, we'd have no problem with exceeding the thousand-feet requirement for a site like this. And then, like the applicant discussed, traffic study addendum was provided, answering some of your questions, and it provided information showing that the legacy apartments project, that traffic was covered by the background traffic that they already considered as part of their traffic impact study. So we're okay with that, too. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Shelby. Another thing that we have in our packet is the Brighton Area Fire Authority. And at this point, they've done nothing further for the applicant. They're indicating much the same as engineering and planning that they'll be addressing things at the end site plan, final site plan, that type of thing. So any questions from the commission at this point?
I do. I do, and I'll put a qualifying statement. You know, Eric said this is the first meeting you're sitting in on this one. I did read some of the background meeting minutes, so I came in semi, sort of prepared to listen and to ask questions. So forgive me if this has already been asked before, but the cost of these homes is around eight hundred thousand dollars, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And has the developer demonstrated that there is actual demand for houses in that price range in Genoa Township?
Yes, sir. There's an impact statement that's required that shows demand for homes. There's a section within that impact statement that talks about the demand for homes in Michigan in generally.
In that price range?
Well, it doesn't specifically break it down by price range, but there's a demand for homes in every price range. The interesting thing about home building today is a starter home is now a four-hundred-thousand-dollar home. You can't build a new house for under four-hundred thousand dollars when you take the cost of land, infrastructure, entitlements, engineering, development costs, and the bricks and sticks that go into a home, anything under four-hundred thousand unless you're talking about an attached product. So that's sort of where it starts. Sort of our mid-range, average type of developments are all running between four-fifty and six-fifty is kind of a standard development. So we said that these homes would be in the seven- and eight-hundred-thousand-dollar range because they're higher-end, meaning that they've got larger lots, they've got bigger houses, and that demands, commands a higher price point. But yeah, I mean, we could give you additional market data. Pulte Homes has a development over in Milford, on Milford Road and I ninety-six. Those are under the Del Lab flag, which is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Pulte Homes. There's eight-hundred-and-thirty homes at that particular location, and when they open up for sale, they're selling them at thirty a month. There's hundreds of residents in that particular development, and the development's only a couple of years old. Those homes are running five, six, seven, eight hundred thousand, some a million that are on the lakefront over there. So not too far removed, we can give you anecdotal evidence of that.
Well, you said there was something in an impact study.
Yes.
Is that part of the?
It's part of your package, yes, sir.
Okay, that's fine. I can dig through it. I just wanted to make sure that, I'm kind of shocked because I bought my house twenty-some years ago for a lot less than what they're going for today. And you say, just to scratch the surface of the starter home, that's about where my house has went up to, you know, starter home these days. This is far, 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 far above and beyond what my house is worth today. I looked it up on Zillow today. And I just didn't know that, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, before we do this, that you probably wouldn't want to develop land without a plan to sell every single lot. So I trust you guys have got your Ps and Qs together. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the market is out there before we go ahead and do this, and do this. And I had a second question. I'm looking at the map that you had up here on the screen a little bit ago showing, yes, that's it, that's it. When you calculate open space, and then we know what the requirements for open space are, how did you calculate your fifty-eight percent open space?
So it was prescribed by your ordinance. So there's a combination of a couple of things. One is the preserved wetlands. A second is the preserved upland. So you can see on that screen, if you scroll back to the left a little bit there, you can see each one of our open spaces, for example, right there, where it says the word railroad, there's one point oh six acre of open space associated with the land between the lot, the road, excess easement, and the property line. If you scroll to the west to show the major spaces, each one of those are quantified. So you can see that there's a wetland-protected area that'll have a conservation easement over it, that's thirty-one point twenty-seven acres. Each of the various uplands are designated, so those are all CAD measured. We've surveyed the entire site and processed that data into a CAD plan so that we're able to measure the actual acreage. You can see the upland that we're saving in that preservation area is twenty-four point eight-eight acres. If you scroll to the south, you'll see in yellow, thank you, the landscape buffer easement. That area is a little bit different than the conservation areas. So there you can see there's a hundred-foot landscape easement that's required as part of your open space. So that two point six-six acres in that yellow area is included in the open space as part of the buffer. So it's on the lots, but it is a, has, it's deed restricted by the master deed and bylaws so that it can only be landscaped. There was an exhibit that we had at the last meeting and the one prior, and this was something the residents were very interested, the adjacent residents were very interested in, is how does that work? Is there enough room for a house? Yes, there's still enough room for a house. So there's a seventy-five foot, your minimum required is fifty. There's room for a seventy-five-foot front yard setback, a seventy-five-foot deep house, fifty feet of usable, buildable backyard, if you will. So you can put a deck, a patio, swimming pool, movie stars, whatever, sheds, the things we do in our backyards, fire pits. And then there's another hundred feet on the lot that is deed restricted as a landscape easement, which we have detailed plans for development of those landscape areas that, by development, I mean the landscaping that we're going to be installing on those areas. So each of those open spaces are slightly different, and you can see a color code up to the upper right here that sort of spells out what each of those color-mapped areas are. That's what's included in the open space. So we're not including any of the lot area in the open space. Everything outside of the lot areas and the road rights-of-way are in some type of open space, and we have various types of those. Now, in terms of the fifty-eight percent, your residential PUD requirement says that your normal open space requirement for PUD is twenty-five percent. And for the residential cluster plan, it increases to fifty percent. And what you have to do to get from twenty to fifty is the minimum. What you have to do to get from twenty-five to fifty- do to get from twenty-five to fifty is for every piece of ground that we're taking out of the lots, we have to increase our open space that amount. So, if we take a quarter acre out of fifty lots, you know, there's roughly seven and a half acres that are required, if you add up all the parts and pieces that we have to add into the twenty-five percent requirement, we're at fifty-seven percent of the entire site, so we're far in excess of what's required on open space. So, this is not one of those issues where, you know, we're measuring something that shouldn't be measured, it's all prescribed in your ordinance of how to measure it, and we are far in excess of what the minimum required is. If you think about the hundred and twenty-seven acre sites, site, if we're seven percent over that fifty percent, you know, we're a good ten acres over what we're required in terms of open space here.
And one last question. To the west, where you're showing the protected wetland areas?
Yes.
It also has the upland in green, there, that twenty-four point eight-eight acres. I'm looking at this, and I have a, I have a little, about the size of the table you're sitting at, designated wetland bordering my backyard, and I haven't touched it, you can't, you can't mess with that stuff. You're not even supposed to be able to walk on it.
Right.
You just don't mess with it. So, this upland open space seems to be kind of landlocked by no man's land. You're not allowed to trespass in there. I just want to make sure that that upland, it's called open space, just for my own confusion or lack, or clarification there, that is not intended to be used by the public then? It's not enjoyable by those residents?
Correct, in the sense that it won't be developed. It is enjoyable in the sense that it's preserved, and there'll be critters that live there, and it's part of their view shed, but that's all part of the protected areas. So, I'd like to make a designation, a difference, the green and blue that we're talking about here, that's all undeveloped protected land, and to get my Eagle wetland permit, I'm going to be required to put a permanent conservation easement, which Mr. Borden had kind of referred to in his review, over the blue areas, over the wetland areas out there. That's what the Eagle will require us to do. I'm not obligated to put a conservation easement over the green upland preserved areas, but willing to put a conservation easement over those green upland areas. We've already designated as undeveloped open space, it's deed restricted in the master deed and bylaws that these areas will be left in its natural state, and to make a differentiation between what you see on the yellow, which is a landscape buffer, landscape requires maintenance, those are on people's yards, you certainly wouldn't want to have signs in people's yards, you walk out of your backyard and fifty feet from your house, there's a sign that says, hey, be careful what you do beyond here. So, in terms of the mowing that Mr. Borden was talking about, those yellow spaces are not undeveloped open spaces, whereas the greens and the blues are undeveloped open spaces. Those are to be made left natural in their natural state, and those are where the perimeter signs would be that says, don't go beyond here, don't mow in these particular areas. So, I wanted to make the designation between the yellow, the green, and the blue, and I hope that answers your question, Mr. Rebert.
It does, thank you. Anyone else?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
The yellow space that we're talking about, is that included in the lot size?
It is, yes, that's right. So, this was one of the clarifications, after you passed your residential planned unit development ordinance last summer, it was one of the things that we did before we submitted our plans was we came to get clarifications on that. In fact, in one of your township board meetings, I think as a result of our question, the question was asked about differentiating between the different types of open spaces, and so the landscape buffer requirement can be an easement and it can be on the lot, and that's enumerated in your own code. Yes, sir.
Got a question on that lot thirty.
Yes.
I would not have seen that if it weren't for Brian. What happened, because when it was lot thirty-three, it was seventy-five, or three-quarters of an acre, and I came for the life of me to figure out what happened to that lot, how it became smaller.
That is a good question, and I'm going to ask my assistant here, Mr. Bissner, who did the drafting and the fixing on that table, but while we're looking at this sheet and talking about the typos and clarifications, I also wanted to note, for Mr. Borden, I didn't know whether your plan originally had these or not, but you can see here the front designation on all lots from thirty-two through forty-five on the very front of the lots there, so we heard you loud and clear on that, so we've designated the appropriate front rear there. Brian, can you talk about the typo that was corrected on lot thirty?
Lot thirty was, I think it was six hundred square feet short, so we shifted the lot between thirty-one and twenty-nine and thirty, six feet, to get the six hundred square feet.
So, now it is three-quarters of an acre?
Yeah, it had been three, it was just, as you design these things, move lines around just a hair, four feet this way, maybe make a little bit more room for a driveway or whatever, it was an oversight, so it was just a six hundred square foot mess, and now it's corrected and is correct.
Okay, good. If I were to print it on the big paper, I probably would have seen it.
I have a question for you. Lot thirty-one, which way is the house going to face?
East.
East.
East, because that would be your front yard.
Your drives.
The driveway comes off the shared drive, hangs a Louis, and goes over to the garage, which would be side load there.
And then, can we go to the thirteen through sixteen for a minute, please, and whoever needs to respond to this question, whoever it's appropriate to. So, the cul-de-sac you referenced is sufficient to be able to get some, you know, maneuver for a fire truck back in there, then the shared drive looks like on lot thirteen, it butts right up to the cul-de-sac.
Yes, that is correct. So, you can see there's a hammerhead at one hundred and twenty feet, there's a note there, he's got it kind of shaded in dark, that's one of the things that we need to demonstrate is that it meets the international fire code for vehicle turnaround, and so that hammerhead does it. You can only do hammerheads of so long, so make one of your feet by the international code, so that's why that shared driveway has one. Typically, how we end up incorporating those is they become part of a driveway, it's a wider concrete part of a person's driveway. We try to make it not look like Socks on a Rooster, like it's a special, like it's a parking space or something else there, you know, it becomes part of a driveway construction. But, yeah, the hammerhead does meet all the international fire codes, and that's what is planned for those four units. Originally, we were talking at the last meeting about making the entire road a shared drive, which is also permitted, but again, because of just everyday type of access and people coming and people going and trucks and those types of things, we thought it best to have a full-service cul-de-sac and then have the shared drive go north beyond the cul-de-sac. And as you pointed out, there's another location where there's a shared driveway.
And I think I asked this last time, but my recollection was, I was asking, who's going to be responsible for the maintenance of that shared drive that a number of people are going to be sharing and top coating and those kind of things, so just...
Yeah, so, I believe, my recollection is that we were going to make that part of the master deed so that it was a common element for the development, no different than a road. If we could get a full-service road in there, then they would have had to maintain that, so the maintenance obligation for the overall HOA will be the same, in the same way as there's going to be some required screening trees on those landscape easements that we discussed in yellow, and the replacement obligations, if one of the trees were to come down or something, would be the HOA's responsibility. And that can all be enumerated in the master deed and bylaws, which we've already, I think we've got two drafts of that through so far, and there'll be more additional stuff added into the bylaws, such as signage requirements and cars parked outdoors and all of those things that get put into the master deed and bylaws.
Right, thank you for that clarification, I was sure that that was the answer, I just wanted to double check.
Yes, ma'am.
And I have just a general question, because you have the fire suppression system and that, that's fairly recent in our township from the building the last couple of years. That's just specifically for this subdivision, it would not be accessible to, like, the neighboring subdivision that might need?
Well, it is accessible to the fire department for any need, so say they had a fire in Mountain View and they needed quick access to the fire suppression.
Right.
Well, that you're referring to, we have one in each of the cul-de-sac bulbs.
Right.
They're more than permitted, allowed, authorized to go and fill that up, it's for their use.
Right.
For fighting fires anywhere that they deem necessary.
Right, and I don't know that that's general knowledge of the public, I just thought it was a beneficial opportunity to, you know, certainly highlight, so I wanted to make that clear. And then, one more item. Brian, you were mentioning lots forty-five through thirty-two having two front roads, right?
Yes.
And something regarding the ordinances, like sheds, we're not allowed to have sheds in the front yard.
Right.
So, is that going to be restrictive to these lots? They won't be able to have sheds in the Brighton Road?
No, so if you...
Brian's saying we should allow them.
If you scroll back to the Chalice Road frontage there, so what Mr. Borden is saying is that because you have a road in the front and in the back, you could theoretically put a driveway in from Chalice Road to lot thirty-seven if you wanted to.
Right.
And so, what we're doing is we're designating that as the front yard is the internal subdivision road.
Yes.
So, it doesn't lose any rights.
Right.
That it would otherwise have for that to be its front yard. It can do backyard types of things in the backyard, such as a shed or a deck or a swimming pool and those types of things, but if we didn't designate which one was the front and which one was the back, they could make any, either one of them the front, it's double-fronted, and so now all of a sudden, you've got sheds or swimming pools on the internal subdivision road, right on the road.
Right.
And so, that's what Mr. Borden was cautioning, and that's why we've designated the note, because the intention is the front yard's the front yard, it's internal to the subdivision, and so it doesn't take away your rights of what you're permitted to do in the backyard, it just, you can't play a smoke and mirrors game by flipping your front and back to do whatever you want, wherever you want.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions up front?
We had one more question up here. The open space designated in yellow?
Yes.
Is that maintained by the property owner? And then, if so, what happens if some of the landscape buffer there and all gets ruined? Who replaces that? Is it any part of that general common element, or how's that work?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Commissioner Roush. Yes, so it's maintained by the homeowner, like, it's their yard, right? So, just like in any site condominium, technically, what you have is you have the unit, which is the walls of the house, you have the limited common element, which is the edge of the lot, if you will, it's not really a lot because it's not a platted development, so it's the edge of the lot is the limited common element, and then the general common elements, which are the roads and the detention basin and those types of things. The reason they're both limited common and general common is because technically, everybody in the development owns those parts, and then when you limit them to the lot lines, that gives exclusive control over that to the unit owner, okay? And that's why we have those, so that a lot and a site condominium act exactly the same. Most of us in this room live in site condominiums whether we know it or not, okay? And your neighbor can't come on your yard, it's yours, it's under your exclusive control, and that's memorialized within the master deed and bylaws. This is the same, right? This is exactly the same. The only difference is that the HOA, as a common element, has a responsibility to maintain those required buffer plantings, and it wouldn't be on, if, like, say, a tree fell down in your yard, you may decide whether or not to replace it, but if it was a required buffer planting, the HOA is going to be required to replace it on your lot, but as far as mowing, enjoying, running around and playing catch, it's the unit owner's prerogative.
Perfect.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last one, sorry. I was looking, I was looking at this yellow border here on lot number thirty-six, it's got a little strip called open space.
Yes.
But you just got done explaining that the homeowner for lot thirty-six gets to use the yellow buffer zone around as considered their play area, right?
Right.
That little green strip, that zero point one-three acres being designated open space, I could walk my dog.
You could what?
I could walk my dog right in that green space right there.
You theoretically could, yes, sir.
Because it's supposed to be accessible and enjoyable for all the residents, and I don't, that, to me, that's weird.
Yeah.
That's somebody looking right in my window legally.
So, that open space is not as such a tiny strip as it appears here? So, if you go back to the site plan slide from my PowerPoint presentation, if that's possible, thank you, if you go up to number four. So, that whole corner from the red line to the lot line is owned by the development and is common open space. The difference between the colorization there is that the yellow is a required buffer, remember, it's not on a lot, so it's a required buffer that the HOA owns, so there's actually about a hundred and twenty feet of open space in that area.
But I'm not going to walk on it, though. We just got done explaining, that's your lot, right? I'm just...
You said that lot doesn't come south, that was what he said.
So, right, that lot ends...
It goes east.
Correct, right at the dog leg, yeah, right at the dog leg in that, in that emergency access drive, that's the end of that person's lot, so there's a hundred and twenty feet of developed open space, and it's all wooded, and it's going to remain wooded. So, it's a woods, so you could walk there, but it's not just a weird strip next to somebody's house.
Okay, that's a, yeah, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want that, but thank you for explaining, sorry.
No worries.
So, I am now confused. So...
This is all...
Could be all green.
So, the whole, the, between Chalice Road and units forty-five through thirty-seven, let's just use that as an example.
I know what you're saying, because I thought...
And I could argue that same to one through eight. Are you saying the yellow is limited or general common element?
It is a limited common element and a required landscape buffer.
Okay, so, and I heard correctly that it's a limited common element, like most limited common elements, they're maintained by the property owner that uses them and has full enjoyment and access to it.
Yeah.
But then you said that there is going to, there is plantings along here that is the, what is it, an easement that the association is responsible for?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so, the way the documents, the master deed is written, is then, I've never heard of this, ever. So, the way the master deed will be written is that the limited common element will be maintained by the property, but within the limited common element, there will be general common elements that is not the responsibility of the homeowner to maintain.
There's a landscape easement that is the requirement of the HOA to maintain, replace, repair, so there's a landscape plan in your package. Unfortunately, on slide number five, I only have the section in front of the detention basin, but if you look at the overall landscape plan in your package?
Yep.
You will see that there are areas of, thank you, beautiful.
I see that, yeah, I saw it.
Perfect. So, if you look at lot one through four, or lot thirty-eight through forty-one along Chalice Road there, you see a difference between the new plantings, which are kind of a circle target looking items, and then the existing tree area that are not in trading areas. So, those, along Chalice Road there, that's existing woods, it's going to stay existing woods, okay? Just like this corner that we were just talking about, about the dog walk.
Okay, so it's not manicured, it's all natural?
It's all natural woods, and so those are the areas where the existing trees are going to stay along those buffers, and then to fill in the gaps between where there are no trees, we're planting those. Those have to be restricted in some way so that a homeowner with a limited common element can't just go in and cut down, say, there's a willow on...
No, I understand now. So, that makes more sense to me, so the limited common element is up to the easement of the association's easement?
Including the easement, but the association has an easement to enter that limited common element for the purposes of...
Of maintenance.
Maintenance of those required elements.
Okay, that makes sense, that makes better sense to me now, I was thinking that it was like landscaped and I'm... And that makes sense. That makes better sense to me now. I was thinking that it was like landscaped and I'm like, that's problematic. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions up front?
One more.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Uh I would just like to go back to the front yard. I did what Brian asked.
Yes, ma'am.
Um if we could add that language into the PUD agreement, I think that would be stronger. So if I get hit by a bus and somebody comes in and wants to build a house, they can look at the PUD agreement and see, hey, these lots, this is the only front yard. The other is considered their rear. If we just add that into the PUD agreement, I think that'd make it.
Easy enough.
Okay.
So while we're still on the landscape plan, um and I'm looking at what they look like clouds, it's like grayed area. Those are all woods, as you referred to. All of those areas that are on this plan are trees and they're planning to stay, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um and then um all the circles are different trees that you're planting um part of the landscape plan in here as well.
Correct.
Um and then we're looking at um forty-five through forty-eight. You're looking at rear yard septics. Is that correct?
Uh.
I can't tell.
No. So so.
They all in the front?
We what's one of the reasons that we increased our front setback from uh well, it's still a fifty-foot front setback, but we planned the development to have a seventy-five-foot front yard so that we could put the septic fields in the front yards.
Right.
There may be one or two on here. If um if they don't perk in the front yard, then we may have to go to the backyard. But the intent is for all of these to have front yard septics.
Right. So and one of the reasons I bring this up is because there's been a a number of people that have um questioned clear cutting.
Yeah.
So um because of the way that the development is proposed and because of where the septics have to go, you're restricted to, I mean, your front yards are are you're pretty much where you're putting all of your septics minus an ability that, you know, you might have one or two that you have to flip to the back. But it would in my like review of this, you're looking at the perimeter of all these lots because you have you cannot have any trees in your front yard. You should not have any trees in your front yard if your septic is there.
Right.
After thirty-four years of inspections, standing with septic inspection companies.
That that's correct, Commissioner Akri. I I I think that, you know, clear cutting is often mis- misused. Clear cutting means wall-to-wall. You're going to cut down every single tree in an area, right? And so that's not what we're proposing. In fact, there's seventy acres that are that that if you do the math um on seventy acres of tree, it's anywhere between seventy-five and one hundred trees per acre. Because we do tree surveys all the time. In fact, we did a tree survey for this, which you'll see in the future in the construction documents when we show exactly this twenty-two inch red oak is going to stay, this cotton wood is coming down. So um in that seventy acres, there's, you know, four, five thousand trees that aren't getting cut down. And then, as you saw in the landscaping plan, we're very, you know, we 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 draw a line of grading impacts. We call it the limit of disturbance. So on this landscaping plan, the reason that we know that there's some little areas that are going to have trees that are going to stay and others that aren't is because we look at the grading. So we know we have to grade the road, we have to grade the lots. And in areas that we don't have to grade, those are our opportunities to save trees. So you can see there's tree saves all along Chalice Road, and there are tree saves along the um Mountain View um adjacent property lines. Uh um there's tree saves along Bauer Road, because those are areas that we don't need to grade, so we don't need to cut those trees. So when 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 somebody talks about you shouldn't let them clear cut the site, you're not letting us clear cut the site. We're not clear cutting the site. We are clearing the development area so that we can put in roads, homes, driveways, septic fields, infrastructure to support fifty-five homes. We're not clear cutting the site.
And I just I wanted to be able to clarify that so people would have an understanding of of what the project is and being proposed, because there seems to be a different perception by by some people.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
So does that mean that a lot of these trees that you're putting on the that you're adding to the backs of the lots between one and twelve, is that to replace trees that you've had to remove or is it to conform with the zoning requirement?
No. So we're we're planting trees for a couple of different things. So you have some landscape requirements down in the bottom left of that uh. Yep.
I'm trying to pull up what you were there.
You can you can see on this landscape plan that we've calculated all of the requirements for what is required by your code. So we're required to do certain greenbelt trees. We're required certain street trees. We're required um certain landscaping trees and certain detention basin trees. So that's how we figure out how many trees we're going to plant on the site. We also sometimes um add additional trees to the site just to buffer things that are next door, whether it's existing residents, when we're saying we're going to have a landscape easement, we'll add trees. So when Joel drew his plan, he's adding additional trees. So if you look at what we've provided and what is required, the providing will always exceed the required, because we're going to plant trees to fill in all of those gaps if you want. So we're going to meet every one of your requirements. You can see that we've met them. So you require forty-six greenbelt trees.
Right, you're meeting the requirement.
Plus the existing trees. So we're not counting those towards the requirement. We're we're supplementing on top of that because we had bigger holes to fill than than forty-six would use. So we add fifty-seven there. If you add all the requirements for the trees, we exceed your your requirements on all counts.
Yeah, I'm one who's for less trees than more, so.
Yeah, less trees?
Yeah, because you guys always because what happens is we require all these trees and then we install all these trees. They're compacted. And then in eight years, when they overgrow each other, they die. And then the burden is is carried by the association to determine whether they're going to replace them or not. Um that's what we see on a regular basis. You know, especially when I look at lots twelve to eight, and I'm not complaining, but it it's just that like most of those people want to see a detention pond. They'd look at it as a as a little pond that they can look at. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, the opinions of those people who move in there. Like you're you're putting all these trees here and they're going to cover up my view of the pond. Um you know, assuming that it holds water. Um but yeah, that that's what that's why I asked the question, because we tend to overcrowd trees and then it becomes problematic in five or six years. But um that's, I guess, the association's problem.
What are the small dots along the tree or along the streets? Are those trees?
Yeah, so there's a street tree requirement.
I'm wondering if street tree requirement isn't in uh in, I don't know, a tug of war with the fact that you have your uh septic fields in the front yard.
Well, if you look at it, you've got.
You're building in a problem.
You've got a lot that's one hundred and fifteen feet wide minimum. And it the front yard is designated as seventy-five. So you're talking about an area that's seventy-five by one hundred and fifteen, and we're proposing looks like two trees per lot. So there's plenty of room to do a four-bedroom, septic field and a reserve and have a couple of trees up near the street.
Thank you.
Any other questions up front?
I have a statement before we go to the public. Um just a reminder, our exercises tonight are considerations for recommendations for rezoning, for PUD agreement, environmental impact assessments related to those things, and concept PUD agreement, which means our exercises this evening are just largely zoning-related. And that in the future will be uh more appropriate times to dig into details of placements of a lot of the details and such uh with a thorough site plan review at that point, assuming this moves forward. Um in regards to uh zoning then, uh I just want to commend you for listening over the last few times, whether it was the public or this commission. Uh you made adjustments to this plan. It has evolved greatly from where it was a few months ago. And specifically, reduction of the seven lots on that northwest corner down to four is really important. And I appreciate that you're coming in this evening, having make that uh making that change, because it preserves the latitude of the density of the zoning district in our community. And I think that was a really big deal for us. And so thank you for coming in this evening with that change being made.
Thank you.
Any other questions up front? All right, I'll send it to the public. Then I'll call to the public anyone who'd like to stop. Do we have a a page with names on it, Patty?
I do. Um Mary Jane Hebert.
Come on up. Please state your name and your address.
Uh Mary Jane Hebert, six eight nine nine Lyle Lane. Um so when we talk about these trees, let's be clear here. Page seventy-eight, the first time Pulte showed up, those trees were not going to be cut. It shows in the original packet, I can't see this date now, sorry, glasses. Um but on page seventy-eight, it shows all the trees, their landscaping plan showed all the trees being cut down and new trees being planted there. So that was the original packet submitted. So I'm glad that they listened to our input, and they're not cutting down all the trees anymore. But the original plan did not show this. So let's not pretend that like this is how it was always going to be, because that's not how it was always going to be. So and the other thing that I would like to state for this, I I am also glad that they they listen to our comments and that there have been changes that have been made for these for this plan. Um the big thing that I that once this starts, if this is approved, is construction. Right now, if you walk down Bauer Dirt, you'll see that there's a construction entrance off of Bauer Dirt. Uh I would request as a resident of the area who uses Bauer Dirt that all this construction traffic should be limited to like um Chalice Road, to that gravel area that or to the gravel driveway that's already there. This is a private development, and I think that it should impact the current residents as little as possible. The current residents aren't getting any benefit from this development. Oh, no, that's not true. I'm sorry. You guys are putting in that path. And and that's that's a really good benefit for the community. But otherwise, the landowner and the builders are really and and the township taxes, I suppose, are the greatest beneficiaries of this. It's not the current residents. The current population of Genoa Township is decreasing. So you're not going to, you know, we may be bringing in more residents, but but saying that this benefits residents, it actually higher uh property taxes because our, you know, putting in new houses and our property property taxes going up, you are making it more difficult for seniors to age in place. And that is also part of the master plan. So I understand that there are many different pieces and parts to the plan and that we we have to balance development with the existing community. And I just I thank you that you are very involved and that you that you are able to consider all the different ramifications of of this development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more, Patty?
Mr. Danhans?
Nope.
So we we have a new system that we're signing, but if you didn't get a chance this morning, you can.
You can step forward right now. It's fine. Anyone that'd like to come forward.
Hello, I'm Deborah Beatty. I live on Pine View Trail. And I I do commend the builder. I I do appreciate that you listened about as much buffering of natural growth. I mean, if you can do more, do more, please. I think it's important to everybody on all the roads and anything you can preserve inside this subdivision. Um and preserving the wetland. I really like that, that half of this property is going to be preserved as natural. That's that's great. Um I'm not so sure about the price of the homes and if that's really what anyone is really looking for right now. I think a more affordable housing would be a better option for most people. Um the other thing, though, that that keeps bothering me is this first questionnaire that is sent to petitioners. And these questions are, I'm not going to go over each one, but the answers are nonexistent or almost repeating the question. And I don't know how things move past that point to begin with to get to where we are today. It seems to me that when someone is given this this document, they should take it seriously and answer questions that answer the questions. Um that ans- yes, that answer the questions. And in particular, um the one, number three, the current AZ AG zoning requires ten acre minimum. And and they are asking, do you have any evidence that a reasonable return on investment cannot be received? I don't have to say more. Obviously, a reasonable return can be gotten from that, even though it is a ten acre minimum. Right there, that one question is not answered. But I think in the future, this form needs to be dealt with as as important, and people need to an- actually have a real answer to these questions. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Come on forward.
Uh my name is Mortensen, and I live at six floor, seventh five Grand Circle. Uh I just have a one question. Are you the new Thethel? Or I have no other one question. But are you new? Are you? I don't I've never been here before, so I've never seen any of you. Are you the new Thethel that were just voted in or do you Thethel stay forever?
We're appointed by the supervisor.
Oh, okay.
But there there is also a liaison between the Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission, and that's Bill. So Bill came in with the new trustees.
You're the guy we blame.
We what?
You're the guy we blame. You did everything. Uh that was a joke, bad one. I've never done anything like this, Thethel. Um I I do have one small question, and I've raised it to this gentleman. And um my neighbors, sorry that you got to go through this again. But um could we zoom out of that, kind of over to uh where I up to where like we get a picture of the Grand Mountain View Thethel and then blow it up?
You want it by your house?
Yeah, that that that's good. See that little green teas that's out in the middle of nowhere? That one right there? Okay, that's that's my place. And and if history matters, my parents bought that home that's on that lot in nineteen seventy-eight. And obviously, thank you to this gentleman giving me a little bit of knowledge about how they did things back then. Somebody uh didn't do what they should have done, and then my lot and possibly the next two next to me should have never been developed. The one to my direct west was bought. And the gentleman who bought it started filling it in, half of it, with large amount of dirt. And it started flooding into our lot, because everything that comes from this teas that's being developed goes into our lot. Now, if you're familiar with three, maybe six years ago, or whenever it was that they redid those culverts and replaced the fifteen-inch ones with twenty-inch ones on Door Road, uh right over here. You're familiar with that?
Right up front?
Yes, we're close to Chalice. They replaced, they tore the road up, and they had to replace three or four culverts. That happened because of me, because I'm the pain in the rear when I see something that I don't like. And it turns out that I knew Brian John Keer and Brad John Keer, and I knew their uncle David very well for the last thirty years. And so through enough poking and prodding, I got someone to come to my house and say, why is, okay, this guy started filling this lot. And my dad was complaining about it back in the eighties. And at that time, my cousin worked for the DNR. And my dad called my cousin, and he came out there. I know this is a long story, that there's a method to my madness. My cousin came out, and he saw that this guy had started filling this in. And all the water that was supposed to be going into that wetland, and then I guess into that little pond behind this gentleman's house over here, which is two lots down, through the culverts over Door Road and then into the Crooked Lake or Coon Lake, Crooked Lake area, whatever that is, is is how the guy from the the Drain Commission explained it to me when he came out. Because he was filling it in, my cousin called his boss, and his boss called this guy who owned the lot and said, get out here. And he said, if you put one more ounce of dirt on that property, you're going to remove or delete it with a T-stool and a wheelbarrow. He said, this should have never been built. It should have always been wetland. So I've lost about and I bought the house off my mother after my father passed away, and my mom got to stay in that home. Thank God till the moment she breathed her last, and I'm grateful. But my only concern is in my sixty years of life, I I've been in the trades all my life. I have an earned degree in in Greek and Hebrew. And I, other than a few years of psychology, I I don't know nearly as much as anybody in the field in the stars education. But I'm concerned about one little thing, and that's that retention pond. And I just wanted to get this on record. If I understand right, all that water is going to run into that retention pond. We are going to have to remove. We are gonna have to remove a lot of trees and as I told this gentleman, hey, it's America. You own a piece of land, you have the right to build something within reason. And we can't take that right away. And people need homes and Livingston County is really growing and people like it here and, and if I understand right, when enough water gets in there, it's gonna dump into the wetlands that it's already there, right? I'm just here to tell you that I don't think that's gonna work. I think there's gonna be more money, excuse me, more water. And I don't know that it's all gonna be going where it's supposed to go. Maybe I'm wrong, again, I'm not as educated as everybody else, but there, I had to, there's a little creek in back of my house. And all that water that runs off goes into a creek. And then that piece, that lot in between my neighbor and I, that's full of water. And I've lost like eight or ten feet of land maybe, because it's just, it's overgrown, it's always a mush. You'll sink, you know, three, four inches when you just step in there. And I'm not a hundred percent sure, when that thing starts to let out the water, if all this water is going into that little retention pond, I had to build up my land next to that creek a little bit with stones and whatever I could and dirt, because it would get dangerously close to my home. And I know that we're in climate change and there's, I don't know about the ramifications of water and growth and so on and so forth, but we are gonna take a lot of trees out, we are gonna plant some trees, which means there's gonna be less need for the water up on that land where they're building. And I'm just, I'm, I, I just, if there's some way we can really take a look at the watershed and how this is really gonna work, because I'm, I'm, again, I'm not educated, but I've been on the earth long enough and I've been in the trades and I've walked every inch of what you're looking at, more times than you chewed off a gum. There's a lot of wetlands. There's a lot of places that always have water. And I'm not trying to beat you up, brother, we've had this conversation, but there's, I don't know, I don't know without you being there and seeing it like I have, I mean, I just, today I, I saw something and I'm a hundred percent sure, I saw a bald eagle. A hundred percent sure. A hundred percent. And I've seen deer and, and every little thing you can imagine. And again, this is their land, if they're gonna buy this, they have the right to build and people need homes, people need a place to live, it's a nice community, but I just wanna be sure. I wanna be sure that what God has given us is gonna be somewhat made big and that there's gonna be no lines crossed. Because the more we cut, the more we take these wetlands away from the earth, the worse things are gonna get. That's the dotted line. Everybody might not look at it like that, though you'd have a hard time convincing me that seven years, six years and let the land rest the seventh, you'd have a hard time convincing me that that's not real. And we need to leave some land, and I appreciate everything this gentleman, I've had more than one conversation with him, and he's convinced me that they're gonna do the right thing over there. And it's beautiful, that whole area. It's just, the other place is, it's a lot of clay. Good luck to the guy trying to put in set the...
Well, we thank you for your input, sir.
Yeah, sorry, I, I just wanted that to go on record.
There's passion there.
But, yeah, maybe a little too much, but thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll keep it short and sweet. Deborah, I'll keep it short and sweet. My name's Deborah Hall, I live over on Party Lake, two-one-six-five Webster Park. And I have been around this area for a long time. I've moved to Livingston County in seventy-six. I have owned my property on Webster Park since eighty-seven. Again, I feel like, I feel for you, because I live on lowlands over, if you guys are familiar with Webster Park, the lowlands over there. So I, I get that. My point is, I don't understand six-hundred, eight-hundred, thousand-dollar homes. I have two children in their thirties that can't afford to live in Livingston County and they grew up here. My son bought a house in Grand Rapids for less than three-hundred, three-bedroom, two-bath, finished basement. My daughter's still in an apartment, because she can't afford to buy a home in Livingston County. And I think that, that's a crying shame. That's all.
Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna close the call to the public and bring it back up front for discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can we address that a letter was received?
Yes.
From Christine Cross.
We also have a letter sent to the packet. That was received off this month.
Christine Cross, do we need to read or do we?
If we could read it, just because it was received at six o'clock today.
Okay.
And it's not included in the packet.
Can we add it to the packet?
No, but the packet's already been posted.
Can we just put it in the minutes?
That's why I was at, that's why I was gonna say if you could read it.
Could we just publish a copy to the minutes?
I think it'd be beneficial to read it.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just worried about setting, setting a precedent for future, future, future meetings where we're inundated with last-minute letters.
Well...
But that's okay.
They have until before the meeting to submit, so...
Right, but I mean, I don't wanna be reading twenty letters.
Oh, I understand, yeah.
All right, thank you for sending the letter over. I will not be able to attend due to short notice. I have three concerns at this point. Emergency entrance off of the cul-de-sac, how are you going to take or make sure that it does not get turned into an exit and entrance after Pulte leaves? And how are you going to make sure it doesn't get used for construction vehicles while the project is being built? I just went through over a year of free, of tree clearing and road construction, I wanna be effective as little, affected as little as possible by this construction. Secondly, pathway that they propose, are proposing, my preference would be to make that run down the new part of Chalice and connect to the path that is existing at Bauer. If you let them run that along the old part of Chalice, it will just make it so they cut up, cut down all the trees and additional one-hundred-feet setback they're proposing. Number three, the no trees are cut down within the proposed one-hundred-foot setback buffers zone along the exterior of the property. Not sure if you can get this letter forwarded and it goes on from there. Just thanks us for being able to include it in our packet tonight. Thank you for your help. And the name is Christine Cross, sixty-nine eighty-four Chalice Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, is there any other discussion up front?
Yeah, I wanted to respond to a couple of comments I heard from the public. First one, the last person that spoke, spoke to a issue in our county that's an issue of attainable housing. And it is an issue in our community, it's actually an issue in many communities, Oakland County included, as well, and it's a, it's a byproduct of the last several years of the economy. But it is something that certainly as a community, as a township, we're aware of and need to make strides towards. And so, you know, one example of that, a little more attainable, would be the development that just started on Door and Grand River, as an example, is more attainable than the, that which is being presented here this evening. But all these need to be held in balance as well, so although a community here with a handful of units, thirty-some, thirty-six, I think, thirty-eight, no, forty, you know, offers homes that are in that price range that was mentioned tonight, we also know that there's other homes in the community currently being constructed that are at a much lower price point and all these things are, are being tried to be held in balance over the long view of the community. So I appreciate your comment and I would say keep that up, because it needs to be on the forefront of everyone's minds, so that we offer in a quality of attainable housing in our community. So thank you for that. And the other one is in regards to the watershed comment. And I would offer this, during the, a site plan review process, this is PED conceptual plans, during a site plan review process, detailed engineering drawings would be submitted with that. There's a handful of civil engineers in this room right now and they could all tell you how that watershed is released at a rate that is restricted to that which is equal to or less than the current background rate. And not only does this community and this planning commission review that, but so does the Livingston County Drain Commission. So there's a lot of eyes on that to assure that the issues that you've brought up aren't a part of the development of this property. So that detention pond has a release rate of that water, not all in one flow, but a release rate of that water at three areas that release it at a rate equal to or less than that which is currently experienced on the property. So we'll be reviewing that. If this does get approved tonight or recommended for approval tonight at future meetings, but I just wanna let you know that is a very serious consideration of the process. So thank you for your comment.
I appreciate you, I guess.
Yeah. And I don't know if there's any other comments or not, but I am prepared to make a motion for the four items.
Another comment at this time? All right, then I'll look for a motion.
All right. Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend to the Township Board the rezoning of the subject parcel from, to LDR with an R-PUD overlay and that the considerations of section twenty-two point oh four, that this commission finds that those have been met to a satisfactory fashion. I'm gonna double-check Brian's letter here real quick. That's it for that, I will have other comments for...
Any discussion?
I support, but with discussion. You, you indicated the word parcel, but there are parcels, so if you, we could make that plural.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, hearing none?
Did we have support? I'm sorry, did we?
Yes, I supported the discussion, yes.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend the PUD agreement with the following conditions, that the front yard issue brought up by Brian be added into the PUD agreement, so that it's memorialized in there. And then...
Changes made, notations for the different dimensions be corrected?
The, yes, the correction, well, that's on the conceptual PUD, I know.
Okay.
Should actually be incorporated on the edge of the natural feature. That the PUD agreement as well includes language for the incorporation for signage along the edge of the natural feature setback to preserve that. And that there's also, there are comments and red lines within that that are part of our packet here this evening, that those also be, along with staff help, completed and finalized. Is that fair?
Yes, it already has the language. And the demarcation signs.
Oh, perfect.
And the PUD.
Awesome.
Take your...
Yes.
Do I have support?
Support.
Well, hold on. Amy.
I have one more. Can we have it updated to show fifty-eight lots in the PUD?
Yes.
Fifty-five, sorry, I missed that on my review when I did it too.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, okay.
I have support, all those in favor, say aye.
I didn't hear that.
It was me.
All those in favor?
Wait, wait, I have a question.
Discussion.
Do we need to cover anything on the walkway at this time?
I was gonna put that conceptual PUD.
Okay, that's fine.
Yep, thank you.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously, and I'll look for a recommendation on the environmental impact.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend the Township Board, recommendation for approval of the Environmental Impact Assessment dated nine twenty-seven twenty-two forty-four.
Support.
Any discussion?
We have comment from staff.
Can we have that updated to show fifty-five lots also? I think it's fifty-one and then two.
Yes, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously, and we'll look for a recommendation of the conceptual PUD.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend approval of the conceptual PUD dated twelve sixteen twenty-four, the following conditions, that a conservation easement be added over the western upland areas, not just the wetlands. That the table on the concept plan be updated, to be more accurate with the changes that we've had over the last few months. Yes, that the pathway is shown on the plans, is in lieu of the internal pathways, that that is, that is the path, path forward. That's the way forward, yeah, that's the path of choice.
Is it acceptable to the planning or...?
Yeah, it's desirable by the Planning Commission to offer a greater benefit to the community at large.
And do we wanna say that we're gonna revisit that at the time of...
Yes.
Yeah.
That'll be a part of the site plan.
Revisit that at site plan to be more specific with what's going on.
I'd add to this too, this is, well, it's not added to the motion, but a detail. As you get into the details of that path, it'd be fantastic if that feature kind of like, I don't know, just meandered a little bit and wasn't just a straight-line sidewalk that went around with a rope, it became a, it's so much right-of-way there and it's, the topography is undulating, it'd be great if I really kinda hugged that in a way that became a nice feature for our community at large. I think there's a real opportunity there, 'cause it is so visible and brand-new for us to do something really nice. So I'd love to work with the community and the Road Commission on making something really great happen there.
Do I have support on the motion?
No, you don't have support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all the time and consideration you've given us. We look forward to doing a great project here for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Thanks.
All right, open public hearing number two, discussion of an ordinance amendment to Article Seven Commercial and Service Districts in regards to drive-through restaurants. Those of you that are leaving now, remember this is an open meeting, so we can hear you out in the hallway. Thank you.
All in the room.
All right, who, what's that?
Can we hear in the room too?
Yeah. Is Amy?
She went somewhere.
Oh, okay. You guys wanna take five minutes?
Yep.
All right. We'll take five minutes and be back, well, we'll just call it eight twenty-five.
Eight twenty-five.
Eight o'clock at night and I'm getting questions about a fireplace remote.
A fireplace remote? From who?
From one on Black Oaks Trail, town.
Where is it? It's on the top of the, it's on the top of the mantle.
Shut out and I turn your temperature on. It's all that makes sense. Sunday night, he must've been watching football and he's like, how do I get my Sonos system to turn on with TV on? I had to walk him through it, I'm like, hey, come on, trying to take advantage of it. I'm gonna answer my phone, but it's Sunday. Give me a break.
Is it warm in here, Bill? Are you warm in here?
I'm comfortable.
Yeah, good.
How about you?
I'm always cold in this building, so I, I have like three layers on.
Oh, yeah. My wife and I are opposite. My wife likes the, she likes the house to, she should be fine if she ever lived in Florida, just keep that house, you know, warmer than I do. In the wintertime, she... In the wintertime, she likes it super warm. In the summertime, she's always like, turn air conditioner on, she goes to the max. When it's heat time, it's max heat, when it's cool time, it's max cool. And I just said, huh, why don't you just put, you know, if you're cold, just put it on, save a few bucks. It's okay, you have what you want, honey.
Oh, they're having a problem with the volume?
Oh, we're...
Okay, got it, thank you.
Still on the camera.
Yeah, sorry.
My phones are hot.
Sorry.
Then I didn't swear or anything.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Debbie Hall.
Good comments, I shared the same concern at the beginning of the video, they're kind of pricey, I hope. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I didn't realize.
Was he? Okay, where did you say you live at?
I live on Party Lake.
Okay.
Webster Park, and he's right up the hill on Gale.
Oh, okay.
And it's a dead end dirt road, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I own that house, 87, you know, my dad brought property in Fowlerville in 74 time. So, yeah.
I wish I could afford those houses, I can't though.
Yeah, I'm telling you. And I have Lake X, but it's 600 square feet, you know, it's a little, you got it.
But it's got Lake X?
Yeah, yeah, it's all sports private lake.
Yeah.
Which dirt road? Party.
Oh, it's Party Lake, okay, Party Lake Road, Party Lake, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I feel very fortunate, but you know, here my kid is, she's been in an apartment in downtown Powell, she's like, you know, and she worked for a real estate company and she works for a banker now, and she's working, she's with Lake Trust, she gets smart.
Yeah.
She's like, I can't afford this house, you know, I can't afford to live here.
Both my kids, my son moved out, got married and moved out in March, March, so he's been gone almost a year. My daughter, three months ahead of him in December, they were looking for rentals, because they can't afford to buy a house, and it's, Dad, I got a two-bedroom apartment for $2,000, and I'm like, jeez, oh man.
17, 15?
Yeah, yeah.
It's insane.
It's insane. My son had to move, he moved out to Southfield, it's not, he still pays quite, his rental is still more than my mortgage payment.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And my daughter and her fiance, they found a unicorn. There was an elderly gentleman, owned two houses, his sister was in California, became ill and wanted to move closer to him, so he renovated this little, little house, it's gotta be less than 1,000 square feet.
Yeah.
The guy did a decent job and his sister decided either she cured or got, you know, didn't have to, so he's like, okay, now I got this house, so he rented it out and that's who, God, it was my son.
Yeah, yeah, that's possible. Wow, nice.
Malford. Second biggest Malford user.
Just give me your address.
2H.
2H, Lane Drive. Oh, okay. 10 o'clock, right?
Yep, I'm at the dead end.
Everybody's waiting for Brian.
Storyline.
It's not working. It's such a joke.
Wait till you go, I'll show you how bad it is.
All right, we're gonna reopen our meeting and we're gonna start with open public hearing number two, I think Brian's going to conduct that, so we'll let him discuss what we have.
Yeah, this is the scary part, Mr. Chair, when you guys just give me a discussion item. I will be cognizant of the time.
Put the two minutes up on the board.
Doesn't the public get three? Can't I have three, three now?
Can everybody please push their button to make sure it goes up so we know?
So, it's on.
That time should not count against my time, Mr. Chair.
Oh, got it.
All right, no, Mr. Chair, I'll keep this as brief as possible because I, I really, the intention here is for me to present an idea, but then I do want your, your input and feedback to make sure that what staff and I have discussed is headed down the right path and/or if, if you feel it's necessary or want us to continue down that path. So, what we have been discussing internally at this point is a potential text amendment that would create a, an additional category for drive-through restaurants. So, what your ordinance has currently, we have drive-through restaurants, we have drive-through coffee shops, both are allowed as special uses in regional commercial. Coffee shops with drive-throughs are also allowed as special land uses in general commercial, but restaurants with drive-throughs are not allowed in general commercial. So, that's really kind of the focus of this exercise is to potentially create a new category. In my mind, I'm envisioning three drive-through categories in your ordinance. We would have one that is more of your traditional fast food drive-through, we would have sort of an intermediary that's like the fast casual idea, which has come up a lot, it's a petition that you guys have seen a lot in recent years, and then we would also then potentially keep the drive-through coffee shop. The, the goal really is, I think, to make sure our ordinance is keeping up with the way uses and businesses are currently developing. Obviously, since COVID, there was an uptick in every community I worked in with drive-through restaurants, it just became kind of the norm and it became something that was really a more and more common of a request over time. You guys have seen a little bit of it here. Where we've been able, it really hasn't been an issue from an ordinance standpoint here because a lot of the newer items in terms of the drive-through restaurants, they've been in PUDs, so they weren't subject to the conventional ordinance. But what we're having, or at least seeing, a potential issue is not having something that would be allowable in general commercial versus regional commercial. This was, I will be honest, this was kind of something we had been talking about, but the reason we put it before you at this time is in relation to a particular request that was made recently. We did have a request for conditional rezoning for a property and they wanted to go from GCD to RCD with a number of restrictions so that they could pursue a fast casual restaurant with a drive-through instead of a coffee shop with a drive-through. Ultimately, the request for the conditional rezoning just did not meet your rezoning standards and so, as you'll recall, I didn't get into it tonight, but one of the review standards in Article 22 is whether or not a text amendment would be reasonable or more appropriate than the map amendment. So, that's where this sort of really started to gain some traction is, I brought it up in a review letter that has not seen, commission has not seen that I'm aware of because the request is sort of halted because it, it really isn't going to work. So, my impression, the petitioner will probably withdraw that request, but that's up to them. I can't make them do that, that's ultimately up to them. But we just saw this as an opportunity to talk to you and pursue potentially what we thought was a better idea if you were amenable to it. So, I'll reiterate, I know Eric wants to talk and I'll, I'll stop, I didn't have a timer on, so I think I'm still under my three minutes.
Well, Eric probably understands this better, so I just got some definition questions.
For sure.
When does a coffee shop become a restaurant?
Uh, that's a really good one because your ordinance currently allows it, but I don't believe that we currently define coffee shop. So, we would probably...
So, so, yeah, and that goes for all these classifications? When, when does the casual become?
Yep. So, part of it, part of my overall intent, at least what I would, I would sort of lay out is how I would propose handling this if you were amenable to it, is potentially we need better definitions and/or that we tie these back to, maybe we get away from the actual definition, though that's how your ordinance is laid out currently, and we could, we could redefine them in terms of their anticipated traffic generation. And then that way, at a certain threshold, the highest of the traffic generators would still probably be relegated to regional commercial as special land use, but the next tier down could potentially be considered as a special use in general commercial as well.
Sue, I love that we're addressing this. I don't like addressing it by adding a third category. I would challenge us, or challenge you, Brian, or some, challenge somebody, to simplify the two categories to one and just focus on the use of the drive-through window, regardless of if it's a coffee shop, fast casual, fast food, the blurred lines between those things here, point Greg, no matter what language we put in for definitions, Taco Bell calls itself fast casual, they're not, we know that.
Sure.
But that's what they'll say when they come in here, I know it because I used to be on that side of the table with them. My point is, I think the more we like start piecing this out, the more complicated our ordinance gets and honestly, the more loopholes we end up creating for people. And I'd rather just like simplify our ordinance over time if, when things like this come up, and in this instance, I would suggest just focusing on the drive-through window because the, the use issue here isn't what type of restaurant or coffee shop or what it is they're serving, the use issue here is the traffic. It's the generation of traffic, it's the movement and the, you know, it creates automatically a counter clockwise traffic movement pattern throughout its site. Ideally, then you don't have, you know, you're using kind of like ancillary kind of connector roads and connected driveways and all to move traffic towards traffic lights and stuff. I think largely we've done a good job at that as I think about the Latson Grand River Road area, but that's, that's my, that's my current running thought, I love that we're addressing this, but I don't like addressing it with adding more rules, I'd rather simplify what we have and be hyper clear about those so that they're...
And, and I think to a larger extent, I, maybe I didn't express it well, I get maybe not adding a third category, but I, I do think that the, the threshold of what is what, if it's not by a definition of a use, then I think it's by the anticipated trip generation. So, we can use ITE information to then determine which use is appropriate, which district and by which method, i.e. permitted by right or special land use.
Yeah. What chip generation doesn't take into account is like the popularity of that place in that moment, because there's a big difference, I know, in Brighton between Starbucks and
Scooters.
Scooters, yeah. Right? Big difference between the two. And so, you know, even an ITE is not gonna take that into consideration.
Another alternative then is even, I guess if we didn't default to IT, I mean, we could, and this is, Shelby's gonna hate me because I'm gonna need her help to, to deal with some of the traffic repercussions, but there's maybe, and this maybe doesn't follow your path of let's simplify and try not to overcomplicate, but I, I want to find a resolution, maybe there's another mechanism via your current traffic study requirements and potentially those, I'm not gonna name by name since we're on TV now, but there are those chains, we know who they are, that they require their own parking management plans just to be able to operate without completely disturbing the roadway and adjacent properties. So, those chains have the ability to provide their own data based on their other locations as opposed to defaulting to ITE. So, ITE to me is sort of a, I mean, it's a good baseline and it's, it's information that I think is good and usable, but maybe the, the alternative to better address today's trends is, is that we, we require some middle of a, of a traffic study upfront, and if it is a, a known chain or a national chain with multiple locations, that they incorporate into that traffic study, the actual data from their other locations and not an anticipated generation from a book prepared by engineers.
Mm-hmm. I, I like that. The only, the other thing too is currently the ordinance requires 500 feet, right, between fast food restaurants? Can we get rid of that?
That was, I was gonna get there, but I figured that was, that was, I don't want to, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouths, but we had talked about that before, the previous versions of this commission had talked about eliminating that altogether, and I think that was, that was another line we were headed down was, I don't know that my initial intent was to eliminate it altogether, my thought process was maybe that we keep it in for those more hyper intensive uses, but we could pull back for the others, but reminder that this whole thing was sort of predicated on the idea of adding a third category, so...
From a zoning perspective, I, I feel like it'd be beneficial to, to actually cluster fast food restaurants together so they could like take advantage of service drives and lights and things like that in a specific area. The 500 foot, almost like creates this like, you have three other things between it and it kind of spreads out over time, our, our drive-through restaurants.
Right.
And I'd rather see them condensed and not spread out through the community, that's my, my personal thought.
I agree with that, because I was up at M59 today and they seem to be able to shuttle everybody internally into the parking and funnel everybody to the signal. So, so, so instead of multiple drives and creating separate islands.
I can see where that would work for future larger developments, and my, my question is, how's it gonna work with smaller, with smaller spaces for that?
That was my concern because if we want to allow it in GCD, we have GCD up and down all of Grand River, not just Latson and Grand River. So, I mean, you're going towards Hacker Road, you got some GCD, and then you're going closer to Chilson Road, that, that's just one of my concerns about eliminating the distance, you know, because we're lucky that around Latson Road, we have the PUDs that have the internal roads.
Yeah.
So, that's just, that's one of my concerns.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Nice.
But the 500 foot doesn't prevent, currently that, right, just prevents a couple near each other.
Well, right now, the drive-through restaurants are only allowed in RCD.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the trick, is we, we potentially be broadening the locations that you could have, certain level of restaurant with drive-through.
Do we, do we think that that would bring up an opportunity for more restaurants if that happens or more drive-throughs or?
Absolutely.
Maybe you limit it by the size of the restaurant and what the square footage is.
Can we get the zoning map up?
Yes, sir.
Is, is, is that something that right now we know that is preventing restaurant owners from setting up shop on Grand River Avenue? Is that a deterrent or current?
I get calls, correct.
Pardon me?
I do get calls, well, the 500 feet is not a deterrent in that, it's the GCD zoning that is the deterrent because we don't allow drive-through restaurants in the general commercial. So, that is a deterrent for potential people wanting to come into the township, potential restaurants. I mean, I could see, you know, people are gonna want to put restaurants around the hospital once it gets going. I don't know how much property we have over there that's GCD, but let me pull up the map for you.
Recently headed with Hobby Lobby guy as well, wanting fast food and beyond Arby's, so, they creating more opportunities, more flexibility within the zoning, more permitted uses, would be great.
Well, and Mr. Chair too, I, I do want to sort of reiterate that, again, back to my, my logic of maybe keeping the three categories, not necessarily doing that, but I do think that there's value in retaining some form of whatever, however we define it, whatever it's called, that use, the more impactful use should still remain a special land use. So, we do have the ability to further evaluate, not just the traffic, but all of the other external impacts of that proposal based on the standards in your ordinance. So, I think there's...
It would be a special use in GCD as well.
Yeah, I, I think there's, I think to me, what I'm envisioning right now...
That gives us more latitude.
Is I think there's a, a by right standard. Is I think there's a by right standard, and I think there's a special land use. And that's the distinction as opposed to restaurant with drive-through, coffee shop with drive-through, fast casual restaurant, fast food restaurant, then it's somehow based more in traffic generation, and at a certain threshold and above, you're special land use. Certain threshold below, you might be a by right.
What if everything with the drive-through windows is special land use?
I'm not following that.
Everything with the drive-through windows is special land use. What if?
Or you could just keep it that way, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Regardless of the zoning designation.
I mean, it is right now.
Yeah.
So, here's the map.
This gives us the latitude to have the right conversations and gives more ability to deny a project that, where it's just a square peg in a round hole.
Perfectly fine, too.
So, this color red right here is the G C D.
Where are you?
Oh, okay. So, this red, all of that, so all the way down there to where we stop it.
What's the, remind me, I know you said this, what's the conversation tonight around adding G C D into this? Is it because of the one?
That, and again, the idea of maybe another way to look at it, but the reality is now, the more I think about this, maybe we just have to look at the, your traffic study requirements. If we just add, we condense it down to food service with drive-through is a special use in G C D and R C D, but then we have the potential where the traffic, I just, and I'm not positive, because Shelby reviews them more than I do, but the traffic studies typically are based on not necessarily actual usage of a particular chain, but more so by what the I T E spits out. And I could be wrong, maybe some of them do go by actual, but I feel like incorporating that language into your traffic, or into your, your traffic study regulations or requirements, I feel like that's kind of the missing piece here, because then it's still going to be evaluated as a special land use. I think the concern was really, because of the amount of G C D zoned land, the concern was sort of the proliferation and/or retaining some level, you know, of control and/or ability to review these things. But, but if they stay special land uses, we've got the ability to give it that extra layer of review, regardless of district. And there are probably going to be locations and/or businesses that simply don't fit. The wrong business at the right location, or vice versa, you know, should result in a denial. So, there is that potential. But again, this, really, tonight's intent was to bring it up, have a discussion, make sure that there was some level of support from the commission for us to start drafting something. And if that's the case, I feel like we've already got a few angles that we can attack, bring something back to you for further discussion. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to jump right to public hearing or anything at this time. I'd rather work with Amy and draft something up for you to consider, put it in front of you next time. We can sort of bat it around a little bit, you can nitpick it as much as you want, and we can go from there.
I like the idea of the special use, especially when you're looking at something and comparing like what Krispy Kreme does as opposed to Taco Bell. Krispy Kreme, all they've got to do is slip your light, and there's a line out on the road. So, that's really got to be taken into consideration when you're locating these properties.
Yeah, and peak hours can be different drastically between the two and all that stuff, yeah. So, the T I S gets important with that.
Well, and that's maybe, that's, and I'll stop talking, I promise, but that was maybe my closing point, was the petitioner that came forward with that conditional rezoning request, they did provide updated traffic study evidence or information, and the reality was that the drive-through coffee shop that they had been, or had approved for, was actually going to generate more full-day traffic than was the proposed fast casual, I'll use that for now, restaurant that they were, that they wanted to pursue. So, you know, in reality, the impacts would potentially be lessened, but the ordinance just doesn't allow it.
Yeah.
Now, I'll stop.
Thank you. Good enough, Amy? We want to move on to the next?
As long as you guys are good.
Anyone else have any further discussion?
Staff report.
Let's go to staff report.
I am looking at maybe doing a second meeting for February, so we will be sending out a poll to see who would be available for some dates.
I am gone January 23rd through February 12th.
Okay. We are looking at the fourth Monday, potentially, of February. See what that date is.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
They'd be held at the Township Hall. Yeah, it would be the 24th.
Why?
Because we have one item that is ready to be heard on February's meeting, and I cannot have, I have the Latson first...
Same situation as last time?
Yes, and the other one would be...
Without a venue change.
Yeah, the other one would be Summerfield. Now, the last venue change that we had, we did not have overcapacity that could fit here. So, we would hold the Latson meeting here, but I can't have the Latson meeting and my Summerfield final meeting, final site plan review here at the same time. So, that's why I would have to do two separate meetings. And we do hold that option available. You know, we always, it's always on our schedule that we could potentially have a second meeting on the fourth Monday of the month.
Are they going to be particularly long meetings?
I do not know. That's, I don't know.
All right. I was asking because, and I don't know how often it happens, back-to-back meetings. I don't know if people have the appetite for that, but...
We've done it. We've done it before.
Last year, part of it.
Yeah. And the only reason why I have to have two meetings is because either we have to do a venue change, or we have the meetings here, which...
Yeah, but maybe if you are going to send out a poll, make that an option, a double, what do you call it, double-decker, double, double feature.
Monday, Tuesday, yeah.
Yep. It depends on if we have a...
No, no, no. Monday, Monday.
...forum, and if the petition make it also.
One right after another is what we're...
Well, that's one meeting then.
Right.
All right, what about the annual report, Amy?
The annual report?
We've got that in there.
I just wanted to let you guys know that I put, you have the annual reports.
I'll note this, I mean, when the Livingston County come, report comes out, seems as though this community sees more requests than any other community in the county.
Yes.
And the cities in our county. And in fact, you could probably take five or six of those townships, add them up, and it still wouldn't equal the amount of work that this commission does and the township does.
Yep.
So, there's a lot on there.
There is.
So...
When we take up one page of the report...
Yeah.
We're in trouble.
All right, next I'll look for approval of the December 4th, 2024 minutes.
Okay, I have changed page, actually Patty, would you refer, would you prefer I give these to you written down of the changes? These are more grammatical?
Sure.
Okay. So, I would approve the minutes with the changes, most of them are typo, to give to, to support for the meeting of December 4th.
Support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I propose, hearing none, pass, and we'll look for December 9th, 2024 planning commission meetings.
Bill, I think you had some...
I did, thank you.
Do you want to make a comment fierce before I go through my list?
Sure. This is in the board's packet, and this is, this is going to be packet page 220. There was a vote, and it's documented on lines 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. Mr. Schoenard supported a motion. Chairman asked all those in favor, the board said aye, chairperson said opposed, hearing none passes unanimously, and I think if somebody is in opposition, we did not pass that unanimously. So, it would be, you could, might just get rid of the word unanimously in line 10.
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Reeder reached out to me about this issue, and I have a call into the company that did the minutes. These are, you know, it's a, there was a court reporter that did it. So, if she comes back and says, well, that's what was said, then I think we just need to make sure that we clarify that, you know, it could have been misspoke. The motion did pass, however, it was not unanimously. So, I might not be able to have the minutes corrected. So, that's what I have to, I'm waiting for a call back.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. And then, on the next page, 221, yeah, same, same situation with the vote, the way that it was recorded. It was asked for a motion in line number one. Blinnis seconded it in line number nine, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye, the board opposed, hearing none, it passes unanimously. So, I don't know where that word opposed came from, on behalf of the board.
Generally, I say those opposed.
Yeah. Okay, sorry, maybe, having the word those would have made it a lot clearer to me.
Yeah. What would you say?
Yeah, or maybe you just asked it as a question, opposed?
No, no, this is after a, after a motion.
Yeah.
Always say, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Opposed, question mark.
Right.
That's just punctuation.
Is that, are you good with, is that it?
That was my turn, thank you.
Okay, so, the rest of these are, Amy, I would suspect if you're waiting to hear back from the person who took the minutes, some of these are words that should probably, that are not correct, and they should be different words in there, like Chris just stated, you know, any opposed, but I've had, I have a number of here. Other than page 177, line number eight, it says, "Mr. Strater said nay." Mr. Strater is not a member of the board, so I'm not sure who said nay. It might be, that's line number eight, and one, page 177.
Right.
That's one, as far as a motion is concerned, that probably should be addressed.
It should be, great check.
Yep.
Okay.
So, I mean, there might be, if the words were said, we cannot change them, but we can clarify them.
Well, Strater's not as...
It says, "Mr. Strater," it's got the name.
So, I'm just, correct. We can have that one changed, but just for the rest, if they state that those words were what was said, then that's why we need to clarify.
So, I will, I would, that was the only one that really needs to be addressed, because it's, if it's incorrect, the rest of these...
She followed better at the bottom of page 177 and on to the next, because it says, any discussion, as I usually ask for, all those in favor, say aye. Said the board says aye. Chairman Graydeck opposed, say nay, nay. And that's, that's the way all of them should have been.
All right, so, I would approve the minutes, subject to the definition or the explanation that Amy gets from the stenographer.
Correct.
With the requests made this evening, and I will give the, these items to Patty, if these are allowed to change.
Hers, no. They come to me.
They come to you, okay.
Support.
This is with the changes, or pending possible changes?
Correct.
Okay, I would second that, then.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, passes. Remember discussion.
Well, I think the moral of that story is Patty, we like the way you take notes.
Thank you.
You're so much better.
Somewhat random thought, but it was coming out, it wasn't appropriate for the conversation earlier for item one, but as we think about that sidewalk along Chalice Road, the road commission has created a couple features in our community in the last five years through roundabouts, and so, thinking about Chalice and Bauer Road, I just wonder if there's a conversation to be had, it may not even be here, but like, can we beautify that at all? Like, that roundabout is an entry feature now into our community, and is there an opportunity there to make it, is that something we'd want to do, spend money on, make it nice, and make it like an entry portal into our community a little bit? Because, yeah, I just wonder if there's a missed opportunity there, of course, Coon Lake Road and...
What are you thinking, signage of some sort, or...
You know, definitely landscaping, for sure.
The garden club, that's the Brighton Garden Club, too.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, they do the post office.
So, but you know, I look at those mounds in the center of just grass that kind of isn't going great, and, you know, I think we have a nice community, we have a lot of great natural features, and I wouldn't necessarily say signage, but, oh, but I would, I wonder if there's an opportunity in these roundabouts for us to do something that, you know, amplifies the entry into our community.
Who would we talk to, the commission?
We would have our township board liaison approach the township board with that idea. I think we'd have to start with the township board.
Yeah.
Would this be something that we would request a sponsor to cover the cost for?
That's a great discussion question.
Being a sponsor for installation is easy. Getting someone who's doing the maintenance is the hard part.
Correct, yes. And we might be able to, you know, for installation.
Just a thought, I'm not, just throwing it out there.
But, yeah, it's both items that we discuss.
I think it's a good idea, because, you know, you're coming out of the city of Brighton, and then you're coming right down to Genoa, and it's a beautiful road.
Yes.
No matter which way you go, you know, you're going to be hitting beautiful Genoa Township, I feel.
And has a lot of visibility with the ski slope there, yeah, yep, correct.
And the one at Coon Lake and Chilson doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I mean, I'd like to see it look nicer from a landscaping perspective, but it's not an entry in the community, you've been in the community for a couple miles already at that point.
With all that we've purchased from where we're at now, down towards the development we looked at tonight, is, do we almost touch that development on the wetland above it? Because we've got quite a bit of property that the township owns now. So, my thought would be, there's, there's going to be maintenance involved with that, so if you're coming down another couple hundred yards, or a half mile, or whatever...
You can't go through the wetland.
Well, but can you get out the Bauer Road?
You get the railroad crossing, too.
You would have to go all the way, you'd have to go Crooked Lake all the way to the door, and then come there.
You're going to hire the train.
Yeah. I see what you're saying, though, if you cut that way through, it'd be a nice trail that would like connect our park amenities to the city of Brighton. It's so close now, after the discussion we had earlier.
It is.
It's a half mile.
All right, any other discussion?
Yes.
Along the railroad would be comparable.
So, driving up and down Latson Road and Grand River, there's a whole lot of mud, whole lot of mud flying all over the place on the east side of the road, and it continues up and across from the construction that's going on.
Gotcha. Latson Road, from Mr. Carwash?
Yeah.
Okay. Which they have fuel storage to.
What was the intersection, Latson and...
South of, south of Latson, where they're putting the car wash in, and the adjacent building, so they, they're developing that now, but it's just complete dirt on the site and all over the road.
That's technically part of their soil erosion control permit through the drain office, so, you know, they have a rip route.
No, it's on Latson.
Correct.
Yeah, and drain stuff.
Yeah.
I will reach out to them tomorrow.
All right. Any other member of discussion?
The only thing I'd bring up is I'm wondering, now that this is televised, curious if we have a monitoring system to see how often it's actually vis... if we have a monitoring system to see how often it's actually visually looked at, but I'm wondering if maybe we should, instead of using all of the abbreviations, like say what they mean, instead of using...
Good idea.
Good idea.
You know, for those people that are not part of this, they don't know what we're talking about, so they're, I think they'd be, they'd have a hard time following us. I even do sometimes, and I've been doing this for three years, and I still have to Google stuff to remind myself of what they are, but it might be good for us to maybe try and, um, provide some of that for those people who are watching.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to talk even more, no problem.
Okay, now, now, what did you do?
You, Mr. Umbar.
I just think it'd be a good idea.
All right, okay, get a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn, uh, motion adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, go home.
Good man.
Thank you.
They do track viewership.